Working up in the northern areas with springs and this is built. So water is my thing, even though my public school teacher has been teaching this district, that of this area for about 31 years. So I'm concerned about our young people that are trying to find a way to live here in Florida. So water is a big issue for me. But I also spent some time on campaign trail last year, running for office. And that took me up into Hamilton County where I was there several times during the times where the smog, I thought it was fog until I had one of them realizing that it was a smog across the land from this phosphate mine that's ugliest thing you've ever saw in your life, especially when you're coming out of Florida, you know, the first time you see Florida, that's what you see. But in any case, it was also very difficult to believe that stuff going on. That being said, also on the campaign trail, I started connecting dots, realizing that the TPP project that's stretching through the county canal, Panama Canal, Jacksonville, Miami, Savannah, Florida has been put here as a conduit. The phosphate, the goods that are coming through Florida, I'm realizing, all of us are realizing are for export. Those things are not really for the good of Florida families. The train they proposed between Jacksonville and New Orleans, that we were so excited about, they can be able to catch a ride. You know, some of that is just mainly for transporting oil as well. The second jail pipeline, they're going fighting with the West, trying to protect the weapons there. We're beginning to connect the dots to realize that corporations coming into Florida don't have our economy in their best interest. It's the economy of corporations that they are representing. And I would also say that recently I found out, we're working with some reform, that there are people from the outside, international corporations coming into Florida, happened to run into a farm who had been approached by Tanzanian, who was in the process of trying to buy as many cattle dairy farms as they could gather because of the water that would afford them the opportunity to raise that cattle back. So my alert to you please is to try to connect those dots along with us, to make sure that we are not trading our economy for someone else's economy. Particularly minute is the future of our children that we are trying to protect here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name is John Blake. Thirty years ago, I moved my family to Union County. I have several homes in Union County. Each and every day since I moved my family here thirty years ago, I have made the decision to keep my family here. That decision to remain in Union County is one that I don't take lightly. We have stayed here thirty years because this is a place that we love. We raised our children here. They are graduates of the school system here. They've gone off into the world to make their mark and we hope to get them back here one day. One of the things that, one of the concerns that I have, as I have listened to everything tonight, and it's been mentioned several times about the federal government and state government. I'm just going to reiterate the fact that I hope you folks don't advocate the future of me and my home to the federal government and the state government because honestly, they don't care about me. They don't know who I am. That man right there, he's my county commissioner. I've spoken with him and I expect that he will listen to me and will look out for my interests. I love that it says in any disordnance that you guys are looking to preserve and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county. That's all we're asking for. One of the suggestions that I have for you as a citizen who cares about the future of this county is a suggestion, whether the moratorium is passed or the moratorium isn't passed, is a suggestion for you to form a citizens advisory board. The power granted to you by the state of Florida and the Florida statutes allow you to create such advisory boards. That board can be made up of residents of Union County that care about the future of the county. They can, the citizens advisory board can do lead work for you, they can do side business, they can take comments from the public who seem to care quite a bit about this, and they can make recommendations to you. So I don't know how you put that together, but you got a smart man, and I'm sure you pay way too much money to write that. That didn't figure that out. As I review all of what's going on, I have also noticed that our land development regulations and the county comprehensive plan look pretty much like the default template that the state of Florida provided for all counties who didn't have such insurmountable back in the eighties. And I can't tell if it's been, that they have been modified very much since decades ago. And so I'm just asking that we have an opportunity to review those things. Where I built my home fifteen years ago is out in the groves and there's a, there's a beautiful area right behind where I live that's got cows on it right now. Seems like because there's a residential area there, that area would be better soon or, or at least ought to be made available for future urban growth in another subdivision. It's owned by agriculture, right down to be mined. That doesn't seem to me to be a good use of that property. The way that the LDRs are in right now, that land can be mined, whether it's part of this map or it's not part of the map. So as a concerned citizen, I'm asking for you to create a vehicle for people like me to give some input to you through that citizens advisory board. And I'm asking you to take the time to review those LDRs and the county comprehensive plan that is terribly outdated and update those things to protect, preserve and protect my health, safety, and welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. John Blake, I am John's wife. John said we lived here thirty years ago to Resher County, in this beautiful county. And I have a question, these gentlemen up here, how much money are you making on the backs of citizenry of Union County? Excuse me? No? So you're offering your land to be mined and not taking a red penny?
It's me. I'm getting nothing. I'm not getting back to...
Mr. Blake?
Not valued. I'm talking right to the social market.
Okay, so you say you will be, but now it'll be going out for sales and you will be making money off the backs of Everstays and here in Union County?
No, ma'am, it'd be money made off the profit and then on mine from there.
So you're still making money on mine. You guys are going to profit off the backs of the citizens of Union County, which is pretty sickening, pretty sickening. You also said that you have a house here, you farm here. Do any of you actually live here in Union County? I'm talking about these big guys, Phil and John. You guys live in Gainesville. So my question to you is, we have to live here and look at the disgust of a phosphate mine in our backyard or in our neighborhood while you're profiting off of that. It's my turn. If you can come here and go home, lay your head on your pillow in Gainesville, wherever you live over there, a plantation or wherever, and not have to listen to the noise, the pollution, or being disturbed and have issues just trying to live your life while you're off in Gainesville, it's up to us, all of us, to have to listen to that. I wake up at 3:30 every morning to go to work. I work on inmates who have all kinds of diseases, and I work with shark infestors. I'm worried about me being able to get a good night's sleep to go to work to support my household or help support my household. Just because you guys own a lot of property in this county does not mean that other people don't have an interest in the state of this county. You do. And I support this moratorium. It's only right that you, each of you, have the time to review what's put in front of you to keep my health and the well-being of everyone in this county at your best interest. That's what you're elected to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lyons. I'm with Union County. Oh, gosh, I've never quite been in an LDR conference or a moratorium meeting like this. I don't think yet. I think the comment was made up here earlier, we have two meetings going on, and I felt like we'd been in two meetings. I just want to, I'll be real quick. I think this map says it all that your LDRs and your comp seem looking at. You have schools, homes, prisons in these gray shaded areas. I've read what you proposed in your ordinance. You went beyond to separate those issues here. They are there. I support doing the moratorium to address, I guess, the mining side of this moratorium meeting tonight. Because the moratorium could be any mining, sand, titanium, it could be any mining company, it could be DuPont, it could be Vulcan, it could be numerous companies. This company wasn't singled out for this issue, but just the fact is, because the mining ordinance has been reviewing. I've heard a lot tonight about new and improved. New and improved does not mean safe. The Titanic was new and improved, state of the art. So was the Long Drake Power Center's terminal nuclear power plant, state of the art, latest thing to come out. All of these things either suffered through minor accident or intentional threat, catastrophic accidents that cost thousands of lives. And you can't say that this is new and improved, that it's the best. It's got to be improved, it's got to be found. My point on the new technique is take it to some of the existing lines and see how far of where my issues are and go from there. Step back and address, there was a lawsuit by Moon Hoyne and Jesse Nash, who worked for Potash for twenty years. Mr. Nash is not with us any longer. So we're not, I think, six of the other people that were in the class action lawsuit in 2000 against Potash. The corporate lawyers drug out the lawsuit, they postponed, they rescheduled. A lot of people died before they could get their laid forward from their illnesses. I'm not very long. I think this board knows what's right, and I want the board for allowing me to come here because yours, all your citizens contact me, they know what I do. I was in their situation one day, we had mining coming to town, and you did look scared, you are afraid because it's an industrial thing, there are accidents that happen. And so I'm here because they, some of your citizens asked me to come help with this process, and I don't really have a problem with that, other than our counties are neighbors. And this fracture issue, which I really hope when you get the CDs and this, you will study that information, it is published science, it is indisputable, it is what it is, it's fair. I keep hearing about we have phosphate on our land, it's not on your land, it's unlimited. And get it up, you gotta dig it up. The Lord made this land and man can't start it and or put it back. He is the master. He put it there and you will never reclaim it or restore it. I don't know why there's records being made, this mining is not what this PCS and Mosaic type of mining, the operation that they grew and do. PCS, I'm a fisherman, I fished up there, we catch the fish, we take the picture, we release them. We've taken them home over the years. I'm for anyone. Go up there and catch something, run them home and clean them, and call me up and let me know how they taste. I think so, well, that's the metal in our water. It's not just the metals. There are a lot of heavy metals and things that were excavated, that were putting these settled in ponds. And some of that reclamation on those lakes took thirty, forty, fifty years. They let all that stuff settle to the bottom and it will clear up. Doesn't mean the companions aren't there. They're there, they're settled at the bottom. And B build, the plantation up there is a ghost town. I have a friend that's a corporate business owner who was planning an event up there in my back, and they couldn't get it done because they have no staff for the plantation. They have a few private fishing guides up there, they have people out to throw opportunities when they catch fish, but overall, you know, B builds are a ghost town. Thank you.
And again, I'm just speaking on behalf of me as a citizen in this county, just like most of the folks in this room. Just as a matter of disclosure, yes, I am related to the family or a part of the family, one of the families that is involved in this. I know that's already a mark against me, that already discredits me. I don't believe before any of your eyes, because I believe that you guys are here to hear each side of this being presented and to come to a reasonable decision. But I do know that that discredits me before I was some. But at the same time, and it discredits all of our families, but at the same time, I don't necessarily think this is something that I have to remind you guys of. Something that does work in favor of our families to remove some of the discredit is we two are multi-generational families, or let me just say, I'm part of the multi-generational family in this county. Our family's been in this county for over a century, or working on six generations if I would bring my kids in here. And so I am as much concerned with the well-being of this county as anybody in this room. And just to prove it to you, because I know there are some assumptions, and it's already been said that we don't live near any of these areas or won't be affected by it. I live at the intersection, or very near the intersection of 18 and 241. Literally, I could probably throw rock at the river almost. My willpower turns brown when the river comes out of its banks. Now, we're talking about water flowing in and out of the Santa Fe, because the river is a tributary into the Santa Fe River, we all understand that. So if anyone is to be concerned about some of these things, it's me. And the water that's going into my body and my children's body and under our families, I'm concerned about some of these legitimate things that we should be concerned about. And listen, I'm concerned about the reclamation and use of the land as well, because when it comes to this, I stand to lose more than any of these citizens who are against phosphate mining, because I actually have the use of some of this land. I can go hunting and fishing on this land, I can run my cows on this land, which I do own cattle. I can farm produce on this land if I want to cut timber, I mean, I want timber, but you get what I'm saying. And if this land becomes useless, then I wouldn't have those things, I actually would lose those things, so would the rest of our families. And as you well know, all of you, every one of our families involved are in one body shape or another, in one little prayer or lesser, involved in agriculture. I mean, this is the use that we make of our land right now. And so what type of fool would we be, or what type of fool would I be? Let me say that, because I'm not representing them, I'm representing me. What type of fool would I be to stand behind and support something that would, that would cost me that? And so, but basically, I understand people's concerns, I get people's concerns, they are legitimate concerns, I have some of the same concerns. I, as a matter of fact, I didn't even know about this endeavor until it hit Union County Times. I found out about it at the same time that everyone else did. And guess what, the only phosphate mine that I had ever been on, and I've actually been on from the rental company that's working, we had equipment out there, was PCS. It's a desert wasteland, you could pick, in Forts, which I was a part of, you could pick up sharks to eat off top of there. Because that's the only thing I'm doing here. So of course, with my concerns, I began to do research, I began to read some of the things that are being published, and actually began to look into the facts. And in many places, which we've heard lots of information about in our society, in different places, a lot of the information that's been presented to us is very easily with a few mouse clicks on, we can pretty much belabor it, and exactly, to say the least. And so anyways, I stand here today, consider these things? Of course, that's what we ask you to do, and consider the facts and look hard into them. And that's my pieces of concerns this in Union County as well.
My name is Jimmy Bealing, I live in Quonklin. My grandson is a sixth generation, I live in a hundred-year-old house that my great-grandfather built there. Speaking to the character of these families that own this land, I've known some of them since I got out of college and subsequently moved back to Lake, to the Providence area. I was very well received, they were very nice to me. I cannot say enough about the character of these families. They've all been producers, they've provided jobs to this county, they have all paid taxes that are a lot more than I would ever think about paying on the property that I own. But what I would like to address is the economics that you're going to miss by not allowing, if you don't allow this mining to take place. The numbers that you saw on the screen on all your, I would say that that multiplier could be many times greater than what you saw. I think it's like seventy million dollars to the county, and the multiplier may come up to a hundred and fifty-seven billion. But you're going to miss opportunities for taxes, for intangible taxes, not to mention all the other equipment, the sales, the conveyor belts, the bearings, the everything that will go into processing this with minerals. I think if you really understood what Bill Gates is doing, he sees a possible food crisis in the future, and even bought thousands of acres that they are farming now, is productive farming, they've used the people they have bought the land from to run and manage the farms. And I don't think it's for the wood, I think it's for what they see the future is holding. I've had this discussion with a lot of more intelligent people than I, I think their potential for a food crisis. But to speak to the reclamation, a number of years ago, intent funds that we work for to help manage the lands and re-parkage the lands, purchased the U.S. Federal Company land, it's right over here in Resher County. Some of that land is issued claims. We would go in there, it was bought back by, it was owned, I think, by the mining company or the good fund, then the land is repurchased by the various intentions ones that were involved in those particular sections of land. We have gone in there and re-parked that land. It not only serves as a pure fire for water, we have seen the wildlife habitat increase and be aboutable. They're healthy, good horns on the deer with good genetic management practices, the wild turkey, you're not going to hurt, you're not going to hurt wildlife population as opposed to what the other groups of the nation had to say. But at any rate, if the county denies this for some reason, you're going to miss all the revenue that's in this town. Thank you.
We do need to speak for three minutes?
Okay, that's kind of, Madam Chair, Land Committee, I appreciate the opportunity to have three minutes to kind of summarize what I've experienced here tonight and give, hopefully, my opinion on where I stand with this. And there's a couple of different areas I'd like to address. First of all, there's been a lot of debate on whether or not to hold back in. The matter is, again, to hold back in. Granted, I said, when Martin's mom and I dig a hole on a rising moon, you can fill it back in and end up with more dirt than you started with. But if you dig a hole on a volatile moon, what it ends up, you end up with less dirt to fill that hole back in. But what you end up with, if you do, if you don't have enough dirt to fill that hole back in, you're going to depression. That depression then collects water, testing my surface water that runs off. And what do you have now? Well, you have what will begin a weather, that'll bring in more birds. So during this reclamation process, if we're going to debate whether or not we can fill a hole back in, it's clean, okay, but the worst thing you want to do is end up, what non-government really ends, and you end up with a lake, a lake that they can provide habitat for birds and fish and other game line, that's the worst thing. So I'll move on from that. The other item is, for this planning committee, this is a property rights issue, that's what it boils down to. And folks are here tonight to debate on whether or not, group of folks that's invested a lot of money, and have a very, very strong track record in this county, are supporting this county in many, many ways, whether it's jobs, whether it's trash directly to people, or whether it's their philanthropic avenues. I think if you look at their track record, it says enough. And I honestly believe that they have no intent to bring ill harm or ill health to anyone in this county. So I guess at the end of the day, you guys are going to be facing with this decision. And I'll just close by saying I rise in favor to progress this project for consideration for the board and to relinquish any more authority towards this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, John.
I'm Tom Ryder, and I live about, we're going to be dealt with. I'm not led to this, I mostly ask for meetings, wash out the cars, maybe ride off some of the mountain, but I guess apparently in this three minutes, I can ask that. I'm meeting solidly for the HPS project north this point, and I hear just a couple of virtues of it are to demonize the supporters. Understand the fears of the unknown, there's very little detailed information that's been made available for this meeting. I have many questions about this project, people in the community are concerned about like pollution, air pollution, water pollution, air pollution, oil pollution, health concerns, and apparently sinkholes. People are afraid all that is a bad of property. On the other hand, understand the importance of attracting jobs in Union County, and the jobs. We also know that HPS project will bring increased tax revenues if you're basing on the percentage of total consolidated revenues, the county home average over the course of this will have ten percent more money, this bill's one point eight percent, the library one point seven percent, increasing their total consolidated revenues. They state the processes unlike the old way in this less environment, destructive, part of all, no longer permits phosphate mining to currently leak any holes or in the landscape. A generous and community-minded redevelopment plan for the, could provide recreational and sporting opportunities, public parks, and hiking trails. If the proposed project actually is everything that is purported to be, it's missing out on and would be irresponsible. I cannot speak to the motivations of the corporations processing the phosphate and financing this strategy. However, there's never been a day in my life where I've not known the Howard families, Pritch families, the Shannon families, and I refuse to believe that one man ever makes a decision to harm this county knowing it would harm the county. They're not all going to leave Union County, they're all the children and grandchildren who live here too. This is truly a special place, and you and the Stewarts are trusted to keep here. That being said, the decision to allow this project, a lot of you have not just been here in this room, with future generations as well, these momentous decisions are not at all to report every month. I think it's unfair to advocate to make a yes or no decision. I think it's unfair to ask you to make a yes or no decision based on an immediate superior for wetting changes to the conference and land use plan. Board of County Commissions for these amount of time sufficient to allow each commissioner to gather the just effects and the impact of this project, the costs, the benefits, and risk reports. I'm not suggesting the county school board or other government units spend tens of thousands of dollars of consultants to evaluate the project, because we might have to do so. However, I do expect our latest and paying representatives and agents of your business to find out both sides of the story. Invest having the personal time and effort to do so. It's not responsibility of the public at large to, to provide this information or other groups to do it, or your flight advice would be irresponsible to simply accept it with HPS group rules and place value. I don't think this decision should be rushed. I just think you can trust your own judgment. I support the moratorium because it will give you time and proper to do your job. Then when you're called to make the decision, you need to sit right away, fully informed and completely mindful of the impact on our community and the benefits and costs by accepting or declining responsibility on the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Edgerton. I'm candidate for Congress for District Three, and I have a family that lives in the Indian River after the county. First of all, I want to say congratulations on having this hearing. It shows the great bill of concern for your community, it's the right thing to do. Some of the things you need to look at, I feel, is what, what and how are you gonna assess or assess the economic impact on jobs and the tax base? When you look at this, don't just look at the next five years, stretch it out, ten, twenty, fifty years from now, hopefully in my day. One thing I would really urge you to do is to require the mining company to look at reclamation costs into an S program prior to starting this project. We've talked a lot about restoration and reclamation. You need to be very aware of the legal differences between those two. Restoration is same, okay? They're gonna put things back the way, the same way they are now. Reclamation, which company officials talk about the mine, is suitable, okay? The land will be suitable. Big difference. Jobs are always on the table, but what you've gotta look at is, these hundreds of new jobs come in, will there be lost some of existing jobs? But there are several people talking about maybe leaving the area. What impact would that have? And how many of these jobs will be local versus away? By that, I mean, mining companies sometimes have a history of bringing in people from away, bringing in people from other mining operations who already know what to do. They don't have to train anybody. Keep that in mind. And there's some questions you might wanna ask. No one's questioning anybody's integrity. I know these families from where they're mined, that's not one here. What we need to do is talk about the county commission, right, addressing the issues of the whole county, and not just sort of rules. I do ask, um, well, I was gonna talk about an issue that came up late in the discussion, and that is the tax base. I've never known of a corporation that didn't want to minimize their taxes. So please keep that in mind, when they talk about how they wanna increase the tax base. And what really gets me is that all of this, all of this mining, asks them where the product goes. Products are on China or Brazil, something that won't be used in the United States. So to me, it's the same sort of un-American to destroy the beauty of this county for China. It's like a...
Thank you for this chance to speak, and allowing the questions earlier. That was nice to be able to have that dialogue with everyone. I thought one question that I, well, two questions that I didn't ask before, could I ask that now? If they're affiliated with Mosaic in any way, this position be affiliated with Mosaic? No? And...
Can I comment on that question? I believe, um, I believe that there's one who's been not affiliated with Mosaic, because the company has not reached out to a particular mining company, like, or mining company itself or something like that. They haven't reached out to them even as of yet. However, um, the new process they speak of, by mixing the standard plan together, it's something that has been studied by Dr. Hassan Elshaw, which was mentioned by Mr. Julie Payson at Friday night's Indian County meeting. And that, and I looked up his, um, his profile from UF, and it tells you who funds this research, and that project was funded by this man. So they do have some affiliation, although not that right.
Okay. What was your name?
Courtney Snyder.
Thank you, Courtney. And they were also saying that a fertilizer plant was not, could not be located there, they would just extract the phosphate and ship it out in the future? Could you apply for permits to build a fertilizer plant at the location? Would that be possible?
It's possible, and that would be entirely different review, there's not any interest of the land.
But it is, it is possible. So if this was started, then eventually they could come back and with the new business plan and both permitting to create the fertilizer plants that, that caused the acidic water and the toxic, the amount of toxic waste. That's just trying to look at the future and any of the consequences and possibilities. Um, I hope you keep that in mind. And as far as the sand mines that they were talking about earlier, those do drain down, the mines do drain down superficial offer. Where I live, that's happening, it's well documented, that's not something to ignore. Also, how about the tourism? We're talking about the conduits. I've been working with cities for twenty-five years building these exhibits, particularly demonstrating the offer, how all those conduits, and he was talking about how, how all those work with the sinkholes and the swales and the rivers and the springs, how all that's integrated. And there's, there's quite a tourism industry around this area built on accessing the springs and the rivers. So he was talking about kind of jobs might be lost if you disturb those conduits, and you have salty water running into the springs, it's a very real possibility. You could be, they could be ruining the springs. That's very possible, and ruining the river, and the quality of the water in the offer that people are using. So I just wanted to mention those two things and say that I, I do think the moratorium is a, is a really good idea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Bobby Markle. I'm the constable assistant chair for the Twenty-Saint John Sierra Club. It's all supposed to be here. We cover an area from Tooele to Brooksville, so we have sixteen counties, so I'm supposed to be here. One thing I noticed is that the defendant or the plaintiff, whichever he is, was keeps relying on all the advice from our illustrious state agencies, mainly DEP. DEP has let us down time and again on our environmental issues. As you know, our springs are turning black. They're turning black because of nitrate pollution. And then we find out on the basin management action plan, which I've been about thirty of those meetings this year, for each water basin, there's a different plan. And so they're blaming the nitrate problem of phosphate. And so in that management plan, they try to isolate the polluted sources and say, well, without the phosphates, the nitrate wouldn't be a problem. They're feeding on, plant life is feeding on phosphate. So, and they also, the Sierra Club won a lawsuit about five years ago in federal court, and the federal judge ordered Florida to abide by the Clean Water Act, which has been the federal law since nineteen seventy-two. And dang, and Florida DEP didn't set shit in there, weakened all the rules, and the Sierra Club actually agreed to let them do that. So now we have weakened rules. So if we're gonna go by those Florida DEP rules, they're weakened rules, where all the springs is dry, the old White Soul Springs is dry, and that's from over pumping and overusing water, that's what it is, these are what's up on the hill in the region of Florida. And they're also getting blacker and blacker than once they've stood around from, from being impaired, they're declared impaired. All of Florida, outstanding waterways are declared impaired from nitrate pollution. Running this phosphate, and it probably is going to China, I would imagine that's where it's going, I'm not gonna do this with everybody here, except for profit, but it may go to Kansas, where they grow corn, which is subsidized by mining of tax, to maybe ethanol, which is also rooted in our oil field. So the place where it's built seems to be a little bit questionable too, certainly not available to farmers in Florida. Every square inch, every cubic inch of soil in Florida has phosphate in it, no need for phosphate in Florida soil. So that stuff about Florida needs phosphate, not true. So why do we mine phosphate? It must go somewhere else. Now, the other question is, how much are they gonna mine? I don't think they said that, if they did, I missed it, but we had a line mine in Leaning County Tarmac that applied to the Leaning County Commission for a very similar land use change, a special use permit. And they were gonna mine a hundred-and-fifty feet deep, a hundred-and-fifty acres each year for the next hundred years, that's what that permit is. I don't know what they described that permit to you, but it's a mining big hunk of land and a lot of depth for mining that size. And so if they do, in Leaning County, they were talking about one truck coming out of that mine every thirty seconds. That's a lot of transportation, running through old portal and above, and your little schoolchildren, all those people better get out of the way, especially one coming every thirty seconds. Probably mine a simply an highway out here if that happens. So it's been said that private land should be used any way we want it most to. That's a very important part of our constitution about private property, that's very true. But the mine is drawn where the public becomes harmed by what is going on on that land, and that's what's happened here. So we have to watch that we don't further pollute the springs, and we don't further impact the roads, and we don't have a twenty-four-hour setup lights burning like you do in White Springs, you can see the lights from miles away, and that air pollution you're talking about. And the other thing is, that mine runs twenty-four hours a day, the people who live around it are gonna hear it for twenty-four hours a day. So I urge you to please implement a very stiff moratorium, and work on this thing until we can get it right. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I'm Julie Payson. I'm related to Jat Payson, here with the property ownership here in this project. I want to start out by saying that I have worked in the specialty of the phosphate industry now for fifty-nine years. I started in the phosphate industry at the lightyear nineteen fifty-seven, and with the exception of two years when I was serving in the military, I've been associated with that since that period of time. There's been allegations about capture, phosphate mining, public capture. In nineteen seventy-eight, there was an extensive review of phosphate employees at a number of flocks monthly, three thousand employees that were interviewed and their medical history was traced, and this review was done by the University of Florida. And it was not found any increase of incidence in phosphate employed versus the general It's been talked about reclamation. I own property that's built on reclaimed phosphate land. My daughter lives in a beautiful home that's owned phosphate reclaim land. Her land was mined in about nineteen thirty, and here about five years ago, she decided her and her family decided to build a new home. I have three grandchildren that lived in that home with my daughter and her brother here. It's been talked about the school system here, how it's going to deter them. I have a ten-year-old granddaughter, she finished the fifth grade at Boeberie, which is the epic center of phosphate mining in the world. She was awarded the four-year scholarship to a state university here in Florida. I have a fourteen-year-old granddaughter, she was thirteen years old, product of Boeberie Little School. She was invited to go to West Point as a apostle candidate to attend West Point, she chose so choose. So the quality schools we have in the mining industry, the very epic center of mining, phosphate, bribe, worldwide, I live there, my family lives, I own homes there, I own businesses there. I have been there ever since I was nineteen forty-nine, when my family lived from Brooklyn, I've been in the phosphate since that period of time. Has been talked about water, and water is a very important commodity for problems. There's the population of Farland has grown pace of attention. Today, there are right about twenty million people, if I remember right. People are a much, much greater user of water than what industry is. Will phosphate mining use water certainly, but will others use water certainly? Has very diligent efforts been laid to minimize the amount of water that is used, not only in phosphate mining, but in other industry? Yes, they have. It's been talked about dust here. The Corps of Engineers did a study just very recently that says that the average dust particle will travel three hundred feet. Now, I know that it'll go farther and less than that.
That's everywhere in my living room.
Yes.
That's okay, you don't live in my living room.
No, the wind left, they go opposite direction. So just because the wind blows and there's dust, doesn't mean it's gonna go in your mouth, am I know. It's been talked about where this product is going. We don't know where it's going, but let me tell you something. China today is an importer of rock. Let me tell you something else. The United States is an importer of phosphate rock today. Let me give you another fact. There is nine people standing up here. If one of you would volunteer to go up there, that would make ten. Now, we do not mine phosphate rock with phosphorus coming from it. Six out of those ten people that are standing up here on that podium would die.
They poisoned the oxygen water, all of us will die.
I'm Kathy Thompson, I introduced myself earlier. For those of you who don't know me, which is most of you, I'm not from Indian County. I've lived here all, for nine, almost ten years. I don't care what anyone's last name is, I, I, I want everyone, and I don't want anyone here to care what anyone's last name is. We need to look at this critically, and logically, and intellectually, and we need to take any emotion out of it, and history you have, and personal relationships with your business, and landowners, and come back to critical analysis of what's happening. I support the moratorium. If I had a mine, it wouldn't just be a year, okay? But I support it for a year, because we can't make such a huge decision in such a short period of time. We need to look at legitimate research. We need to look at all of the plans, all of the perspectives. We need to look at our LDRs, they are old, they are outdated, and we need to update them and make them accurate and part of the twenty-first century. And we want the moratorium in place until the LDRs are changed, and updated, and reflect our current land needs. And we do not want any mining in this area. Let me give you just a little history of me, and just take a second. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, I'm a master's degree in social work. I served eight years in the United States, A B S and P A officer, nineteen forty to two thousand and two. It is my life's mission to take care of people. It is my life's mission to look out for children, I'm a child therapist, to look out for victims, to serve the underdog, to advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. And that's why I'm here tonight. Because what I'm hearing is that we have money versus the well-being of others, and I say we go with the well-being of others.
Yeah.
We do have one more speaker for us, if anyone else wants to speak, they will be filling out a form on our last speaker.
I filled out a form.
Can I call your name?
Nope.
All right.
Would you have luck? I filled it out.
From Eden County, please, Nick.
Good evening, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman. I want to take three minutes. I think I agree with a lot of one lady that was just up here speaking. These pages are all friends of mine, I want to share them with you. There's a lot of people here that are openly opposed to this, I see the signs, they're also friends of mine. That's okay. That's the system we have. We're blessed to live in this country, and we can come here and debate this issue. The one thing that disappoints me a little bit is that we're not being civil. When people are up here speaking, we should give them the respect that other people give to each side. And we need to hear them. I don't know enough to tell you which way I feel on this. I don't think any of you have enough information to make a decision. I don't know what a moratorium does for us. As I said, I have a lot of agreement with what the young lady just said. It's not about what your last name is, it's not about money, it's what the well-being of our community is, of our citizens, and our county as a whole. But if I understand it right, if you pass this moratorium, we gonna get them before and do the investigations, and do the research, and get knowledge, and be educated. I want to be educated, I want knowledge before I make a decision. I'm against the moratorium, and we'll let the process move its way forward. It will take quite some time. They're not even ready to make an application, I understand, at this time. So this is gonna take quite some time, as it is. Thank you all for here today.
Okay. I have a speech prepared, but unfortunately, a lot of the good folks that have their big presentations covered a lot of the stuff that I have. However, I will go back to the dust issue. I'm gonna hand you all a pamphlet right there. Y'all can pass it around as you need. That first page is zoomed in to the area where I live. The proposed mining area is within a hundred yards of my front door, and my neighbors who are sitting next to me are within two hundred and forty-seven feet of the property mine in the post area. They tell you the dust will blow within three hundred feet, and that the dust is comparable to what you come up with when you're plowing a field with major garden. I'm here to tell you today that that is wrong, and I have evidence to show you that. Once you go past that, the first picture you'll look at is a picture of tractor plowing field. I found this through a simple Google search, and I chose that picture because I've seen many of our local farmers using the same type of tractor. It's got some dust on it, but not a lot. Now, the second picture depicts an active dragline in use. That part is comparable to the tractor plowing field. However, the last picture that I've enclosed in there was featured in the Tampa Bay Times in June of two thousand and twelve. There's a lady that lives in Fort Walton, Florida. She is landlocked by these phosphate mines. She took this photo for her front yard, I believe. And you can see, that's on a rainy day, there's a school bus driving down the road. The dust is obscuring your vision of the dragline, and even eliminating a certain amount of the daylight. That scares me, considering how close I am. Especially considering, not only do I myself have a history of asthma, my two-year-old daughter has a history of asthma. And if you're not familiar with how asthma works, what it is, is basically, I wouldn't call it a disability for state, but I would call it a disability because it can disable you. It inhibits free breathing through your lungs and your bronchial passageways, through inflammation. That phosphate dust was quoted by the American Lung Association as a large trigger to asthmatics. That was talked about in the paper in Langley back in nineteen ninety-five. They quoted, "There were five thousand eight hundred kids in their school system who suffered from asthma." And as you know, there are phosphate mines in that area, as well as in Polk County. Now, I've watched my daughter have an asthma attack, and that was terrifying. We have been in our emergency rooms since she was six months old. It took us three months to find someone who would actually diagnose her, because of the huge stigma that comes with having that diagnosis. But without that diagnosis, you cannot get proper treatment. And as much as I know, some of the people who are involved in this, and I know they're not bad people, I think they may be a little disinformed. You know, it breaks my heart that they would want to put this across the road for a two-year-old baby who already has problems proven. Now, I'll touch on a second subject that could possibly affect the entire state, and this has nothing to do with water. This has to do with our state prison systems. Our region has several correctional facilities in it. It is one of the main sources of employment in our county, as well as in Bradford County. In Union County, just south of Lake Bubber, is R A C. That's the Great Reception Medical Center for the northern region of the Florida Department of Corrections. That facility houses a lot of inmates who are already sick with something, whether it be cancer, hepatitis, emphysema, it doesn't matter, they are already sick. And this proposed area borders right behind the prison. Now, I ask you, how would that affect the tax dollars throughout the entirety of the state? Because it is the state residents' tax dollars that fund the healthcare costs of the men incarcerated there. Now, to go back to the dust, in the proximity to my house and my neighborhood, many of the people in my neighborhood are single-income families who rely on their jobs at that prison. That would give them twenty-four-hour exposure to the dust. Now, just to quickly touch on something with the water levels. I've been sent anonymously, some results were a lady in Fort Walton who had had her well water tested. In my hand, I've got her drinking water, and I've got her irrigation well. The drinking water gross radiation, the results in her well are eighteen to twenty-two. Standard would be fifteen. The radium levels are seven point nine to twelve point seven, the standard would be five point oh. In her irrigation well, it is discolored, and the radiation level is a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty, where standard is fifteen. I'll also pass these to y'all, for y'all to remember as the next person speaks.
The clean water that you give when you buy the water that comes out of the aquifer that the water companies are selling. We get right out of our faucet from our killing well. The idea that I'm gonna have a mine three hundred feet away from my water supply scares the hell out of me. And those of you that haven't heard of Murphy, Murphy's Law, the result of unintended consequences, should look at the Worthington Springs website. I looked at it, being curious about this area, we're labeled here, and learned about the mineral springs that used to be in Worthington Springs, that drew people from all over this country to come in the early twenties, thirties, and forties. And then they decided to put one-twenty-one, that nice big bridge across there, and there we go with Murphy's Law, the rule of unintended consequences. When they put the pillars down into the river, they closed off the spring that Worthington Springs, and that mineral hot spring that people used to come to was gone. So they can give up here and give you all of these reports that they're not gonna harm anything, and I'm sure they don't intend to, but you can't guarantee it one hundred percent. None of them can. I'm, because I'm retired, I'm living on Social Security. If something happens where I can't live on this property, I have nowhere to go. These poor families will have millions of dollars, and even go buy the land anywhere they want. They won't be stuck here. The community here is responsible for all of the citizens of this county, not just the interest of poor families. I know that you all understand that. The other thing I heard here tonight was, well, we've got the pilot program that we're gonna try somewhere else. So in other words, this community is going to be the guinea pig. Or if this process works or it doesn't work, I don't want to be a guinea pig, and I hope none of you do either, thank you.
We have the Simmons. Sorry, Michael.
Love your name.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay. I'm trying to think really short. What I'm concerned about the schools, I'm concerned that the mining is gonna happen directly behind the schools, there are a lot of children that already have breathing problems, and one of my little granddaughter's friends has asthma, who goes to the school. I mean, this is kindergarten, middle school, high school, and it's supposed to be right behind them, and I'm very concerned about that. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, nobody's just giving the family's intentions, these local homeowners' intentions. The best intention in the world would be great, but you can't always tell who knows what's gonna come of that. And just because they intend for something to turn out a certain way doesn't necessarily mean that it will. You know, I worked in a bleach company for a while, we manufactured bleach, and we had a monkey on the second line, and we were very careful with it. And then one day, guys came in the floor, so we also made some cleaner, you know, floors and stuff. So the guys taking that big machine, cleaning the floor, but lo and behold, all of a sudden, all the workers couldn't breathe. All of a sudden, we had fumes going everywhere, because there was something in that floor cleaner that reacted with the bleach and the air, the fumes in the air. Did anybody anticipate that? No. Were the intentions of the company to poison all of these employees? No. But stuff happens. So even with the best intentions, when you're dealing with things that are unknown, when you're dealing with things that are possibilities, you can't guarantee that something's not gonna happen. I also wanted to say this, I want to say a couple of things. One is that, you know, talk about landowners rights, and you can do whatever you want with your land. Now, I tried, in my own personal life, to do the next right thing, you know, and I'm learning to think about all the human decisions, you know, and in my view, what this landowner thing means to me is that every landowner is autonomous, they can do what they want with their land, except when it affects the community as a whole. We can't only think of what we're gonna do with our land, there has to be some greater rule to live by. You know, I have a neighbor, and I have a dog, and I put my dog, I walk the kennel, and I put my dog outside for a couple hours a day just to give it some more care, and the dog barked, come off the mark. And it was the middle of the day, so I didn't think it was a big deal, and the landowner came over, and what you know why? I moved up here to retire. I didn't move up here to hear a dog barking or something, you know, and he was very, very adamant about it. And you know what my response was? I removed the kennel, I brought the dog inside, and I no longer allowed him to have that access, and when it went out, I went out with it, you know, or I gave it a five-minute run, but not to work for all of the desk. Now, do I have to do that? I said, you know why? This is my land, I'm gonna do what I want, my dog can make whatever noise he wants, the middle of the day. But I did do that. And that's what, like, what represents to me, represents community. I have never lived in a place where I've seen this many citizens come together and say, "You don't want this." You know? Last thing I want to say is that, you know, I have a lot of faith that things are gonna turn out the way that things are now. You know, I know that God has a plan, whatever that plan is, you know, I'm gonna be okay. My family will be okay, we will land on our feet, no matter where we land. But, you know, I said a prayer, and this is what I'm gonna say to this body, I'm gonna say, if you have any doubts, if you even ten percent believe that something may go wrong with this, if you believe there may be a chance that someone could get sick from this, it may be that our community is going to change, maybe for the better, but you know what, it may be for the worse, and if you ten percent, or one percent believe that, I think that the decision that you make is gonna be one you'll live with for the rest of your lives. You know, and we have to consider our neighbors, we have to consider doing the right thing, you know, we say a prayer, we give a meeting. We need to do what we say, we need to practice what we preach, you know, we can't just pray for God to come in and fix everything, and then not do the work. You know, He puts us here so we can listen to whatever His message is, and you've got hundreds of people in your community saying, "Please, we don't want this." If you choose not to listen to that, then you're choosing a mine mine not to listen to God.
I was most proud of the, I'm just the economy, the long-term effects, fully, you know, Union County. I mean, I think about it, you go up to Worthington Springs, I've been there, you know, I've tried to live both ways, I took my wife up there, made a few livings, and it's pure devastation, towards Jasper, we're not towards Jasper, you know where Jasper is? It's, the poor folks couldn't get out. You know, you have some stubborn folks that maybe they didn't work at Robert, but it definitely looks like the poor folks didn't get out, and that's the same thing, you know, I've been here in Union County. Okay? Twenty years of jobs, nothing. Looking at the history of mining, how many of them even be laid off? I've been in my job for seventeen years, my kids are still going to school, you know, our kids are going to college, you know, right here from Union County, you know, it's just pure devastation. And I, and we will, we will believe in mining content, I'm just letting you know that now. And if you go on to it right now, look how many houses and properties have gone over several in the past ninety days since this has been going on. And if you think the moratorium doesn't get passed, it's gonna explode. And anybody who can't get out, wait, where would this county be in twenty years? Where would it be? They can't guarantee nothing. I was out there listening to the reporter give an interview to the U F guy, and he said, straight up- up, the reporter asked him, "Can you guarantee that the wells ain't going to get affected?" And so he waited, stepped in, represented for him, stepped in and said, and he said, "No, I can't guarantee anything." And she said, "Oh, you're not going to answer that? That part ain't going to be on the news, I guarantee you that." You know, I mean, we really, really need to think about our future. I was looking at buying a property that started coming from my son's school, he has just graduated from Union County from Lake Butler High School. You know, I'm not going to do that now. That's not going to happen. You know, I got five kids, I want at least three out of five to stay in Lake Butler, you know? I mean, I just really wish you guys were thinking about the future, not the short term. Short term is, I tell you, it's a bad idea. Nothing is perfect, I don't think we're trying to do anything wrong or anything like that, but it did great, great things in Union County and all that, though, doesn't give them the right to destroy it. Thanks, guys.
I have one last thing to share. We did go and purchase an economic feasibility study for this endeavor, and pretty good is not completely yet, but there are some highlights that I want to share with you now. Reasons why the counties should not take action in favor of the petitioners to open new mines. The economic impact studies of both counties are contradictory and inconsistent, and what I'm talking about is this report that they created. And I don't know if you have that in your files. According to this, and this is off their website I live in, on page one of the Bradford County, for example, the direct impact, i.e. direct employment, is given as 119 jobs. In appendix table 1, however, there are 36 employees and only nine full-time equivalents, which is, which is, they want to know, 119 or nine? In Union County, there are 119 jobs seen on page one, but only 15 full-time equivalents on appendix table 1. The other thing that I just want to highlight, we're going to try and agree, there's several things that are inconsistent with this report that they're agreeing. The total output of both mines is given as 2.4 million tons per year out of appendix table A. This is 10% of the entire Florida phosphate industry. They intend to reach this level as of 2019. It is not realistic that 18 full-time equivalents produce 2.2 million tons on 400 acres. This is the yield of 3,000 tons per acre per year, and 666,666 tons per full-time equivalent. These numbers are not consistent with the earlier mosaic sponsored feasibility studies. Two more items, the argument that mining and exporting are fertilizer makes America strong is completely false. There is a limit to our phosphate resources, while other countries have large resources in abundance, nobody in their right mind can counsel setting our food production upon the limits of a foreign base of phosphate, even if we're not really a US-based, which is not. The decision to ship ore by train ain't good for the environment, but it may be expensive unless they are taking long distances without its peace and secrets, peace secure, this business venture might not fly off, and it will be then reduced to conventional use of water. It'll be beneficial if we plant nearby, it cannot be fertilizer production as we know it already. Then our new age proposal, which is what they're offering us, defaults to just another Florida phosphate complete with all the environmental problems we have already seen. These two counties have a future in farming, in forestry, tourism, groundwater springs and rivers, and natural habitats. That is their strength and their joy, your strength and your joy. Mines will bring wealth to a few owners in economic disaster to prefer a way of life for these two counties. One more thing that I mentioned before, I follow a lot of water issues out of the state of Florida. South Florida will be moving here, they are already starting to come. Your confidence and plans and LDRs need to be accommodated for that. This will not give you jobs. South Florida, with their entrepreneurs, with their business people, will come and will start to live next to you and money you, they will bring the jobs that everybody is seeking more than anything this mine can offer their community. I really thank everybody in North Florida, every county here in North Florida needs to take that into consideration. After Lake Butler Choggi was released, just this past month, these people are going to be coming sooner than later. And so you need to take that into consideration if you allow this to happen. Mega phosphate mine, these people are not going to come here. Thank you.
This is me with the planning, some zoning board, local planning agency, not getting the board camp condition, although the condition is the same. The resolution that you have afforded will be non-mining for the board, it's just a renovation. There's no pending applications for mining to act on, it's strictly a moratorium resolution. The resolution was drafted by staff, was asked by the board, county commissioners, to put together a one-year reporting for the purpose of allowing the board time to revisit this conference, plan, plan all the regulations, and vote, this is irrelevant to mining. This resolution is drafted, the systems integration is planned, and also the entirety of the resolution is going to be in the package, it's going to be, the planning is going to be a local planning agency to have. The resolution is titled Resolution of PZ slash LPA M16 dash 01, a resolution of board county commissioners of Union County, Florida, serving as the planning and zoning board of Union County, and the local planning agency of Union County, Florida, recommending to board county commissioners of Union County, Florida, approval and ordinance declaring a moratorium on acceptance of applications and processing of applications for mining special permit approval and issuance of mining special permits for a period of one year, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing ineffective data. And I'll return to the board to share, to take up action.
Okay, I am calling for action of the board.
I've sat here for a long time tonight, and listened to a lot of emotion, and listened to a lot of facts. Maybe we can talk? Okay, I'll talk really loud. Adrian Roberts, in fact, in fact, you know, I appreciate what you said, it concerns me to say that we can't become more educated and learn more about this process if we put forward a resolution of passing on it, but ultimately would give us a moratorium on the project. We met with Mr. Scott Boons last week, and that was not how understood whatsoever. Mr. Julian, we had a comment from you, and I took it when you told us in the meeting. You're a very smart, very educated man, I understand this, I understand the process, the landowners, the landowners, it was very adamant, Mr. Timothy Riley, which seems to even actually become a little emotionalized, some of the other people, about not wanting a moratorium. Bill, you expressed to me that not the moratorium, multiple people here that were opposed. Well, we wanted to see Mr. Julian, as a landlord, as a landlord, this assumption that, I think it would be, I'm a little confused, why we would not want to educate ourselves more, why we want to learn more about so much of say, so much of say from the landowners on your private land and ask citizens in the community to learn more from this? If the moratorium passed, it'd be retroactive to February 15th, is that correct? But...
There's still research that I believe is possible.
Possibility, there's 10 months to educate and learn more about this whole procedure, pro and cons. We'll take the one-batch approach, but I think we're irresponsible not to. So we need to act some other more, how we're applying the motion for a stop or approval of laws.
And we do have a motion on the floor? We have a second by... And by Mr. Crawford. Any other questions, uh, for? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Most of yours. Meet this adjournment.